To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was just gonna say, happy birthday, Don.
Street department. Uh, lady's not here.
I got, I'm not doing a report for you.
General there, pardon me, right? My name is only, Phil.
Also, I'm gonna open thing that, we got a situation now on Wall Street, two four, two ten Wall Street, about neighbors complaining about the junk in the yard, and, you know, they're falling down.
Where's that at?
I think it's two ten North Wall Street. Right before you turn on Oak Street, when you're on North Wall Street. Right into these, change bases. He's got a building there that's kinda falling into the alleyway, and then some trash in the backyard. He's worked and cleaned up a lot of it, but he's, you know, slow going on it, but he's working on it. We've talked to him about the building, and it's fallen over in the alleyway. He is more than able to work with us on trying to get the building down. He just don't have the finances to do it. What are you guys working on? Yeah, he's working on trying to clean it up. He's just one guy, and he's not the best help in the world. Uh, I don't know what we can try to do to help him along with that, or getting his building down and helping along with it.
No, well, I'll, I'll probably be about that.
I'd say we could take it down, if we could have dumpster, an arm machine, and two guys, two and a half, three, could probably do it. But that's just up to you guys, whether we need permission to. We haven't signed much papers saying, obviously, I'm liable for anything, all that kind of, be on your, your side of it.
He's definitely. I'm not really sure that the ownership of that property, the guy's living there, it's his brother's property, brother died. Yeah, we're willing to, to open it, right? It, it's, it has involved somebody who used to, it may be this guy, I don't know, I, I, depends on how true he is.
Somebody still paying taxes on it.
Yes, yeah, in fact, somebody has been paying taxes on it.
There's no order, like you're part, yes, what's up getting along? They still live in there.
I think this would be probably very, very little cost to account.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what we could put, you know, taxes, which may, may not be collected at the point. Yeah, because if, if we do, if we collect the tax, say, on the, that far out, also, Palace Park, actually shake out.
Anybody want to look at this? He actually took the rest of the porch down, because we said something to him about, he got out there and took most of it down, left one little place there, but it's all done. Well, then, when I did, we cannot touch that house, because it's more test, that's, that would have to be somebody in here and do it, and we, we especially put it down.
Well, we take care of that field, everybody.
Yeah, and just a little bit of some junk he's still got in the backyard. He got rid of a lot of it, but kind of some bigger stuff, he can't get, probably by hand, but easy with the trackers, pick up kind of stuff.
Well, you gotta say, go ahead and do that, and then property.
That gets part, part of it. Also, also, help, we are getting our inspections out, part of the state out there, four, three, four countries, Florida. That's more phones than. And tomorrow, they're gonna set the, uh, twenty, the campaign, uh. Yeah, last week we set, uh, gas on, thanks. I want to keep a free visit.
Oh, I heard about that, yeah.
I don't know what they're gonna do about the, the, out here, out of the road, it's kind of late, they're gonna set it down for the year. So I have any questions?
I have one for her.
Is there any question? Can tell me something about town?
Austin, help me, I wanna talk to your station. I thought you, Austin, help me, I need help with.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Waste water, do you?
Yeah, water, wastewater.
Uh, on water, uh, we sent a letter off here about, a couple weeks ago, uh, to take my name off the official operator for the town, and have Austin be the official operator for the town deal. I think that begins on the fifteenth, actually. Uh, I think, uh, we put in that my last day today would be officially the fifteenth as official operator for the water. Um, that's all we got for water, right? Yeah. Uh, as far as wastewater, I do got a quote here, it's in front of, I think Ray's got a copy of it, for wastewater classes for Austin. Uh, they're twenty-two A and E, and we was gonna split them three ways with Triple T and Gentryville. And it saves a lot of time for him having to drive to Evansville, we can have right, their right area of sewer plant. And we split it three ways, that's about eight hundred dollars a piece, and that's six week class.
Last time, three, huh?
Yeah, that saves hours of money, yeah. I went through the same class whenever I got my license, uh, me and Tim, we did the same piece as Dwayne Johnson, he's at Newburg. He's a great teacher, that's why I called, gave him a call, and he agreed to do it. Also, there's a MyTanna quote in front of you for wastewater, um, for, I believe it's thirty-eight hundred dollars, for a new camera head for our camera, for our sewer camera. The head went out on it, it's twelve or thirteen years old, and it's, it, you know, it's been a good camera, and the head needs replaced on it. And it's a thirty-eight hundred dollar camera head.
So this one would be like twelve thousand?
To replace the whole thing is twelve thousand, yeah. And it's been a darn good camera with that, and this is the first problem it's ever had with it. And it's been very cheap stuff.
Make a motion for the camera head replacement.
I'll second it.
Man, I believe that's all I got. Thank you.
Guys, not here, but, um, I can report a couple things, you guys have our reports, if you have any questions, just let me know. Um, we held our, uh, in conjunction with the special kind of health department, we held our, uh, car seat clinic at the Chrisney, uh, EMA building, uh, we did give away a car seat, and then I was able to renew two people's, uh, car seat technician with being a proxy for our county, I'm able to renew that, so we got two new people renewed, uh, for the certification, the giveaway of car seat. Uh, coming up at the end of November and going into December, uh, the fraternal oral police, um, will be hosting a toy drive. So we'll be, um, here in Dale at the Dollar Store, uh, starting on Black Friday, and we'll be there probably every Saturday, um, as well as in Santa Claus and in Rockford. Uh, so this year, they'll be doing, um, thirty-six families, forty-four kids, and they'll be welcome here. We'll be having our Christmas party on the twenty-second in Chrisney. If I have any questions in regards to this part?
Thank you guys.
Yep, thank you guys.
Any public comments? Want to bring up about, uh.
Richard.
Richard, you ready, Richard?
Yeah.
If you want to bring up about, you talked to me about, uh, next year, have a, a parade or something for the.
Yeah.
Two-hundred-and-fiftieth. You came to my house talking about that, about, I'll have a parade next year for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, in Brooklyn. Got a possibility for that next year.
You wanna do that, would you? When?
Fourth of July, country's anniversary. It's on Friday, so, we'll count while I thought. Before you pull it off.
If you have a, I would love to, you want, you pull. Yeah.
You want to be president?
No, but I'd like to be able to work with it, work with. I, I'd rather not be, but, come down from that, yeah. We have to, we have to keep it moving.
We'll, we'll work on it, okay?
Would you want to send out a favor of local volunteers, many volunteers were forced to walk away.
You guys can about, uh, about the great route, I'm shocked, I didn't think there was any of those jobs down here, but couldn't be at the Cola. Come down either Washington or Manay, either one.
And they go down to that park, and they go pass the park.
Yeah, I guess.
It usually has, but there's a lot of seating and stuff down there, but, but, yeah, we could do, we could do that. Funny, funny, funny room I think, to walk in. Yeah, yeah. Oh, they're, they're, they may not want people around, I, I don't, I don't know, I was asking. Well, that'd be a thing, community talking about. Sort of something to think about.
We'll work on it, we, we, I'm, 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 I've been putting word out, but I'm.
Go ahead, meeting here, I'm pushing as hard as I might.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Have you done any discussion on the new organs, or?
We're talking about it, uh. You guys sign more up on, what do you call them, uh?
It's not beside.
What do you guys think?
I don't see a problem.
You don't what?
I don't see a problem. All good.
Murray, what do you think about it?
I'm not a real big fan of it. I mean, we can always let it happen, but if we get an issue, and we start having a lot of problems, then we can reverse it, go away with it.
That's a good idea.
I just don't want, I just don't want to see us having any problems with people, lots of people's yards, or anything like that, you know? If that becomes an issue, then I think we need to.
Well, I brought some, most towns do not allow four-wheelers with a saddle seat, it's only a side, a side. I brought a whole bunch of local towns, so I don't say I'm driving through a yard.
I find some sidewalks don't really.
Oh, they don't go fast, but if the car goes fast, too, like you said, if you follow the speed limit, it's twenty-five in town, so that's, it's kind of a loose point. Because, like, it's got signal lights, hazard flashers, high-low beam headlights, brake lights, mirrors.
If they go by.
Well, you put it in, then you put it in the harness, and it has to have signal lights and brake lights.
I don't know, I guess it's, it's, it's a try. I just hope we can always change it. So Bruce, did you write up an order for that?
I'm not wrapped up. That's the round. So you could be yours for a meeting.
Okay, if Bruce wrote up orders, then I'll go through and.
I, that's what I brought, you almost every one of them, both for work, except just little nuances between streets and.
One of the towns, a lot of them.
You brought in the whole package.
Yeah, the whole package, I don't think you were here the last week.
I think that's right, and Murray may know, didn't he?
Honeyberg, Holland, Furman.
Yeah, Santa Claus.
And Bill Chandler, and all of them. Actually, I've searched, researched a few more, just about every town our size around here allows them. And all the organs, I think cities go back to, you know.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll go through them.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
You have other comments?
Yeah, I want to close the street down, uh, December twenty-first, before P M, eight P M, Main Street, between Oak and L Street, or the Santa Ringer, then. December twenty-first, Sunday. And I'm gonna have, I'm gonna use the street this year for Santa Ringer, it's got a lot, oh, okay, so, that's okay.
We can move them, buddy. Bruce, do you have anything?
Yes. Uh, I'm, I'd like to start off by introducing, uh, Dan and Melissa Schrader, uh, they're gonna be moving to the community, and they, they can describe what, what, what their intentions may be.
Yeah. So, I'm Dan, I'm Melissa, um, so, we have a beekeeping supply company, um, so, we're gonna be moving to the town, um, along Burst Road. We are not quite ready to make an announcement, because, um, we're not taking possession of the property until January, uh, so. Current owner is asking for privacy, and, and we don't want our customers driving past, and that kind of stuff, you know, causing disturbance or anything, so. Uh, basically, just wanted to introduce ourselves, um, so, we live, actually, at French Lake Address, we're in DuBois County, but we got a small farm. We raise fruit boys on our farm, uh, and kind of transitioned to honeybees. I met my mentor, Jerry Apple, in East Jasper, and Jerry was a dear friend, um, so, after he passed, we kind of took on this honey business. And then, the same time last year, uh, some friends of ours asked us to buy a beekeeping business in Boonville. So, currently have a beekeeping supply business in Boonville, and we live in French Lake, so, I can do the math. So, we've been looking for a place in between, close to interface for our customers, um, and so, we found this great place. Kind of got all our eggs in the basket to make this work, uh, we're committed, and it's our, it's our passion to teach and educate, and about pollinators and nature, um, with a little bit of manufacturing, we make all the bee boxes ourselves, so. I have a day job, and I work in the woodshop in the evenings, and weekends, we teach classes and everything, so. Hopefully, grow the business, we're gonna get our feet underneath of it, and we're gonna need the community's support and the town council, so we just want to come and introduce ourselves ahead of time. I'm, you know, anything you can, advice you can give us, or things we need to check off the boxes to make sure that, you know, we get started, you know, on the right foot, on the right organs, and that kind of stuff, we just want to make sure we follow all the checks and assurances.
And, and we do help to bring in some more business to the town, too, with the tours and activities and things, so not just focusing on the beekeeping supply side, but also on the honey and honey products in farmers, in general.
Our, our future plan is to kind of grow that into some agitators and that one, so.
Have you talked to, to around employment, Schrader?
Yep, I had a couple of conversations, so, I, we've had to kind of flow some things through first, some of the previous, uh, meetings, and kind of ask some questions secretly, because we were trying to work out a deal, and we had to keep things private and quiet, um, for the sake of the deal, for what we're doing, but, uh, so. Yeah, we're excited, we're glad, glad to get started here, and look to grow, and we're really excited about the future, so.
We're a little glad to have you here.
And we did bring some honey, we've always liked them, and one, for everyone in the room.
Brought some, our one pound balls of honey, so, tastes what we're about. Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep, I'm Dan, I'm Melissa Schrader.
Are you done?
Uh, soon.
Okay, you shouldn't have papers in Florida, you're Indiana, we're gonna give team planning, you know, so. As you know, we did our big wastewater project, we also have Oprah Grant, you know, Bruce can help you explain with it also, but whenever you get a grant, uh, federal grant, you do have to do the day of state and wage, and they get reports from their contractors, a lot after the fact. And one of the companies that actually filed bankruptcy, and we had to replace them with, did not pay, uh, two of their employees the proper amount. So Oprah has written us a letter, and says that we will have to go back and make up that difference to town and Dale. So, you can see the one water, so we all, uh, eleven hundred thirty dollars in interest to one general one, and then same amount to the other. Well, then I got the second letter that says Oprah has decided that we also have to pay interest on top of that. So, and I have that page in front of me, if you all have that, or the total. Well, we do have to pay it, we'll come out of wastewater, however, if you remember when that company, when that company filed bankruptcy, their bond had to pay us out, so we have that bond money, so it will not cost the town actually any money out of their pocket, because we received the bond money, and we still have bond money left, so we will pay it out with that. So, I do need a motion on it, though, before I can proceed to pay it out. If we, if we do not pay it out, we'll never be called like for another federal grant.
I'll make a motion that we pay out these two kids.
The next thing is, um, I went through the audit, as some of you were at the closing, and one of the things they did not like on the salary order, was asking my pay, because I get paid forty-five percent out of general, and twenty-seven point five percent out of water, and twenty-five, twenty-seven point five percent out of wastewater, so water and wastewater are the same. But they wanted a finding of facts in a letter explaining why we don't pay a third, a third, a third, okay? So, I came up with this letter, I showed it to Bruce, and you each have one in front of you, and basically, I'm explaining that I feel like I need more pay out of general versus water and wastewater, because I do more for general. I have all the different departments, which increases the responsibility for me in those. I have more payroll employees out of the non-utilities, and I also have a utility clerk and an assistant utility clerk that handles a lot of the way, the day-to-day, uh, collections with utilities, so I feel like they take a lot of my responsibility away. And the bottom line was, when I came twenty-five years ago, that's how it was set up, and I continue to do the same. So, this is just a finding of fact letter that I have to have in my minutes, that I presented it to you, by reasoning upon my salary against what, the way it is. I would like it if you can.
So you're balancing, balance?
Yeah, I, I, well, it, it doesn't change anything I did in twenty-five years, but they just wonder reason why I get more of my salary from general versus water and wastewater, one thing, water and wastewater, you know, would be saw and balanced, and hey, they couldn't afford, you know, afford it. And it's just, I don't know, when I came twenty-five years ago, that was the way the court treasurer and town council had it set up. We continued, and it's never been an issue for twenty-five years, but they said the reason is because they'll go some places, and maybe they're taking it all out of just general, or all out of just utilities, so they came up with a new thing, that there has to be a finding of fact, where they're explaining why each town does what they do, and every town, city in town does it differently. Does that make sense?
And I have to make a motion, she, uh, after listening to the explanation, which town, lines that is correct. After hearing that, considering the facts, and the court finds, and the council finds that that's properly.
I made a motion, considering facts, that facts, that things are balancing out, or setting, to get this clear up.
I'll second it.
We'll just find one, send it in, if I can.
Yes, but feel signed, I just, you hear, so you can have your life adventure, and then we'll just put it in a policy book for, in two years, when we get out of the ground. So the next thing I'd like to bring up is, uh, a resolution, and I talked about it the last meeting, for the council members that were there. Due to our, uh, process of being an advocate a long time, our checks are not getting to the vendors in time. So, as they board, it's the last sudden, can do electronic funds transfers and pay them online, if we have a resolution made up for it. So, I've showed Bruce this also, I also got it from some other towns, but, uh, it would be twenty, twenty-five dash eight, and it allows the court treasurer to be able to make the A C H E F T payments, so therefore, like, the health insurance, we've got all three of our checks one time, and another time they got taken and washed, and then we had to renew, so there's been a lot of multiple, uh, credit cards, so I guess the payments in time, you know, so there's been so many multiple, like, you can't count on mailroom something in two weeks that be in there, you know?
There's a lot of places doing the electronic funds, I know the county just started distributing their checks through electronic funds.
I'm getting, I'm getting our payments from the county through that way, too, but before we can enact it, and then, of course, we need a resolution, so that they're happy, so. I have prepared this resolution, and Bruce has overlooked, or looked at it, no, I didn't, looked at it, and approved it, asked again.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And just so you know, like, I'll still have all your plans and stuff, and it will always be on a doc form, a doc, in fact, if you want us to start actually making a doc up for everyone, we can, too, but, so they still have to.
A lot more secure that way.
It is, it is, I agree. And next, uh, we also, for the community crossing grant, now, we have to update our Title, Title Six and our A D A plan, so. I've updated it, sure, I am going to ask you to consider and then pass a resolution at the next meeting, because I know, I thought you could just come in on the forum. If you want, stay out there, leaving if you want, and, uh, we will. And, uh, we will need to pass that to the, uh, qualified to go for community crossing grants now, so it is updated and I think that Bruce kind of feels with me also. So on the left, you gotta look at that and bring it up next time, okay? If I realize you can.
Oh, salary ordinance.
The salary ordinance, uh, yes. Ray and Larry and I met before, so we can kind of go over it before I present it, it does have to be passed by the December meeting, I'm presenting it tonight, if you're comfortable passing it tonight, otherwise we'll present it during the half of December, hopefully.
I kind of like the, Bruce very good today. It's been a long time, it's gonna be a lot of work.
Basically, she's more appropriate.
Proper shape?
No, I make a motion. Should we, Bruce, it's not a lot, I'm actually gonna be trying to, we don't sign it, we approve it.
I ask, you really, you can approve it tonight. If you want, then you can wait till next meeting, just make sure you do approve it by the December meeting.
I'm gonna move it through the showroom.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll make the first.
Uh, but we have our claims.
We have multiple claims.
Multiple pretty claims.
You're moving through the parent's report?
Parent's report.
I'll second it.
Next, maybe two to three per night.
We do have, after this meeting, the redevelopment commission, so we have it, so just so you all know, we want to take it where we can, but we will have a redevelopment commission.
Yeah, during this, there'll be a redevelopment, be a formal report. I'll be moving to the third meeting.